This conference will now be recorded.
Like to open up this special session, December 4th, 2021 at 8:00 a.m. Session called Order. Any corrections or additions to the agenda?
I have one change to the agenda. I'd like to remove the lunch break and go right into deliberations.
Okay. It's fine with me. Fine with every council? What is it?
Uh, two reasons. One, lunch at 11 o'clock kind of seems ridiculous. I think we should just go into deliberations. And two, I have to leave it new.
Okay.
So that'll give us an hour to discuss.
Okay, anything else? Any additions or corrections? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to uh, go on with the special meeting with one exclusion of the lunch break at 11:00 a.m.?
A move, Mr. Mayor.
A move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Councilor Norman, uh, would you call roll please, Ted?
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Daniel Ward?
Aye.
Motion carrier.
Okay, moving right into city council vacancy applicant interviews. And, um, welcome Sharice back again. Sharice H. You pronounce your name Shari or Sharice?
Sharice.
Sharice, okay. Thank you.
Yes. No problem.
Oh. Um, it's like we're using the same questions. You probably have them memorized by now. I don't know what you're going to say under the no notes or anything, but I'll go ahead and start off uh, with the first question and we can go around counterclockwise this way. Uh, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
Um, yeah, my name is Sharice. I moved to Vernonia with my husband in, uh, 2019, about two and a half years ago. Um, we've been in Oregon since 2005 or somewhere around there. Um, and we're ready to get back out of the city. Um, we love it here. As far as community activities, I actually just took a full-time job at the school Monday through Friday. So that's been really great. Um, I've been trying to get involved more with some of the, uh, well, I was going to, I applied to be on the planning commission if I don't get the council seat. Um, I would prefer the council seat, but I will do the planning commission if not. I'm just looking to get involved in other ways.
Okay. Yeah. Based on your experience or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and the challenges for the city?
Yeah, I think the strengths are, um, that we have an amazing sense of community, a close knit group that for the most part works together. Uh, we have amazing natural resources. We have a really great kind of rural location. And I think the weaknesses that we're seeing, especially lately, are a lot of division. Um, and obviously issues with the, um, vandalism and things like that. I also think a weakness is, well, an opportunity really is, um, working to have a sustainable amount of tourism, especially in the summer, and help our local businesses thrive, even though there's a small economic base.
Thank you.
Would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city?
Say what would?
What would?
What would you?
Um, yeah, I think it kind of the things I just said. I guess just preserving that sense of community while still making the amount of commerce and um, development sustainable to keep the city thriving.
Hey, you've given us some of your background and your application in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Yeah, so with my nonprofit experience, um, I'm president of a, we're actually over about 430 members now, nonprofit. Um, and I'm now vice president of the Portland Regional Gem and Mineral Show Association, um, which operates to put on large scale events at the year. Um, so I have a lot of experience working on teams, also in my creative career background, working on teams of all sizes. Um, whether it's just me, working with a small group, working with a large group, representing a broader community. Running and participating in meetings and board meetings. Um, a lot of conflict resolution. And now I also think that, um, being, working at the school, I'm even more involved in this community. And so I think that could be a good liaison and a connection with the council as well, especially given the demographic that we're seeing a lot of the issues arising from is school age right now.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Vernonia in the next two years?
Um, I think continuing to deal with what's happening with COVID, um, without it dividing our, our community members. Um, helping our local businesses too well, um, with the restrictions, with lack of tourism. And then bettering the city in every way that we can. So, um, combating vandalism, promoting a sense of pride and, you know, working to, to foster that pride.
Okay. Yeah. Number six, in the last few years, the city councils averaged over 60 meetings each year. There will also be additional meetings for boards and commissions that you expected to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend these meetings?
Yes, absolutely. Now I don't have a commute, so I have a lot more time than I have before. I'm definitely willing to put in whatever time needed for meetings, other events, research on my own, things like that.
Item seven, city council sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How do you handle those who criticize you and your decision to have you make?
I think it's important to have a thick skin. Being in a public role, obviously you're opening yourself up to criticism. So I don't think I would be here if I wasn't prepared for that. Um, and yeah, I think just if a decision is made that there's feedback that that wasn't the popular choice, um, it's trying to explain and educate why that decision was reached, um, some, some background and context maybe. Um, and just explain that decisions are made for the betterment of the whole group. And so sometimes it's not going to be the right choice for everyone, but it'll be the right choice for the majority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What would you like to accomplish as a city council member?
Um, it is redundant. Okay. Um, yeah, I just want to represent my community. Um, be able to feel like I have a voice. I don't like to be a person who sits back and criticizes. I like to jump in and be involved and try to work to make things better. So just overall improvement.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have the time to devote to this job?
I do.
Indeed.
Yes.
Now, up at the school, that's five days a week.
It's five days a week. Um, yeah, it's early, so I get out at 3:15 every day. So it's pretty great.
Good.
Yeah.
Are you an aide?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're really short of aides.
Yeah, they're short of everything. There's a lot of running around, so that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah. I have a follow-up for question seven. Um, recently, the group Verge came to council. I don't know if you listened to that one or not, but they wanted to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. This council rejected that. What's your thoughts on that?
Um, so I, I absolutely understand the perspective of why Columbus Day is viewed now by many as problematic. Um, I think it's important to to try to give everyone a full picture. So I don't think the right thing is to nix Columbus and never teach that. Um, I think that we should look at implementing an Indigenous Peoples' Day in separately from Columbus Day. Um, and then maybe we reframe Columbus Day to give a fuller, uh, picture and education, you know, that there were favorable qualities and maybe also unfavorable qualities. And we can look at all of that on the day instead of just celebrating. But I think it also, it, it cheapens paying attention to the amount of attention that Indigenous people who are on this land before us deserve if we're just putting things together. I think why shouldn't they have their own day if not more?
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll read the last question. Uh, number 10. What do you think about expanding the urban growth boundary to add more acreage to the city?
Um, I think it just has to happen on a case-by-case basis is the best way. So, you know, if it's a small area here or there, I know that you guys just kind of D-N-X one property in a place that made sense. I think growth adding in a place that makes sense is good also. Um, but obviously I think that one of the assets of Vernonia is a small footprint. Um, and so you wouldn't want to see like a huge swath just added without.
The place we're thinking about adding is around the school, behind the school.
Okay.
Your thoughts on that?
Um, I have no problem with that. I live behind the school on the other side of the river, and I think that development could be a positive change in that area. Um, and also I think that especially at the back end of town and on the west side of the river, it's not, I think it'd be really sustainable because it wouldn't be super optic, like the size when you come into town wouldn't feel much larger. So it's a way to add probably space for housing, I assume, without, um, making Vernonia not feel like a small town anymore.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I've got, like I said, um, I've got a question and I'm going to ask Daniel Beach applicant.
Sure.
In light of the increased crime rates both nationally and locally here in Vernonia, and the recent incidents of vandalism and arson within city limits, how would you prioritize these problematic issues?
Um, so I think the important thing is to identify the groups causing the issues and the motivations. Um, and so I think we're all fairly aware that we're seeing a lot of younger people causing the issues. Um, and a lot of the motivations are stemming from peer recognition. So they want attention. They're posting it on social media to try to get that positive enforcement from their peers. Um, and so with any problem, once you know where it's coming from and why, then you can start to operate, like what completely, what closely combats that. So what would be a way to show that they could get positive reinforcement somewhere else? Obviously, this is a specific thing, but in general, I think that if you look at where it's coming from and the motivating factors, you can look at how to motivate from the other direction instead.
Okay, I, there's kind of two parts to my question. And the second part is, would you offer one solution to help protect the safety and wellbeing of the citizens of, of Vernonia?
Um.
What do you think needs to be done?
I don't think one solution is enough. So I think that you have to look at, at changing those motivations, redirecting to, um, that activity and energy to more positive actions. But then also, you know, there's a, the safety is going to be maybe, um, looking at budget for additional surveillance, especially in the hours where issues are happening, where people are feeling unsafe or vandalized. Um, so I think it's, it's a puzzle. There's pieces that it should be a multifaceted approach and not just one solution.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, I met with the district attorney this last week and in light of oh, different arson incidents and city hall vandalism, one of the windows broken out.
Mm-hmm.
Just had a good discussion with him. He wants to meet on a more regular basis. So
Thanks.
Um, I, I personally think that that's one of the ways we all get involved and with law enforcement and, and the people that actually make the decisions to hand out the indictments and so forth. So.
There has to be accountability. If people are seeing that they can do these things and there's no repercussions, the city just pays for it and it's done. There's no reason for them to stop.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I have two, and they're kind of both in the same. So how many paid jobs do you have?
One.
One. How many volunteer things are you involved in at the time?
Two.
Okay. You're busy.
I'm usually more busy. I feel less busy now. I spend a lot of time driving now and yeah, slower time in the winter for sure. So don't, I don't feel very busy. I'm a little fancy.
Were you involved in photography and?
Yeah, I've done photography and graphic design professionally for the last, like, 20 years. Yeah. Um, I, for photography, you have to be there physically. They can't do that remotely. So I was driving still to Portland a lot, which I don't love doing. It's not how I want to spend my time. And I love the creative side of running a business. I was starting to feel a little fatigued by having to chase work and especially during COVID, things were slower. Um, just kind of wanted to take a break, do something local. Um, there's really good benefits, which is not a feature of self-employment. So yeah, just trying something new for a while, ready for a break.
Good. All right. Guess we could have put these on. God, we put these on hours?
It took an hour last time.
Oh, man.
Yeah, it's over 45 minutes.
So I will, um, contact everyone on Monday, um, to let everyone know who council decided to select. And then whoever was selected will be sworn in at the meeting, um, that night.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so this coming Monday?
Yeah.
Well, here, okay.
Yeah, it was online.
Uh-huh.
So.
Okay.
Virtual right now.
Um, I do have one other thing I wanted to touch on that I didn't, I guess, say yet. Um, I think another thing that I personally could add, um, to council that's extremely, extremely, um, valuable is diversity. Um, obviously you all seem like wonderful gentlemen, but diversity.
Oh, yeah.
You guys seem great, but there's definitely a theme in the room, um, elephant, I guess. So, um, yeah, I think that half of Vernonia is female and the median age is only about 44. Um, which means 50% of our population is below that age bracket. So, um, I think that, actually in the deliberations last time when I listened, um, it was mentioned in the context of optics, um, which is very valid, but I also think that, um, you know, aligning it only with optics is a little bit reductive. There's a reason that showing diversity in a decision-making body is um, desirable. And that's because there's actual tangible value in having a broader perspective on in conversations and in research. And there's, you know, value in making a more fully informed decision. So I do think that's something that would be valuable to council.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right.
No, they just hang out. They could be your time.
All right.
Thank you, Sharice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, tighten that up.
About a 45-minute break.
Do you want a recess to break? And then so I can stop the recording?
Yeah, probably better.
At eight twenty-two? That work for everyone?
Yep.
Yeah, for me. Good for me.
Good for me.
Come on in, Charlie.
Well, I was seeing this group up so early in the morning.
Took you so long to get here.
Right. I was gonna say, I says, you know, I came down last time I came down, I came down early. And I was like, wait, I says, why don't wanna appear too anxious?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know?
Yeah.
How's everybody?
Great.
Good.
Yourself?
I am well.
I'm good.
I unfortunately you created a dilemma for me.
Yes, I did.
This just means that now I have to leave here and go to the church and decorate. Because I gotta work.
Oh. Hacking up there, Charlie.
Hacking out, but I can clear that up. Okay, here we are.
Yeah, we gotta go back into session here.
Sorry, just returning this.
Are we back?
Yeah, eight twenty-nine, we're back.
Yes. Eight twenty-nine, okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie.
This is a public meeting, so if you are being recorded.
Watch your mouth, Frank.
So you know.
Okay.
Well, welcome, Charlie.
Thank you, Rick.
Kevin, and um, we're basically gonna ask the same questions as we did in uh. Was it June?
Uh, yeah.
Believe it.
Okay.
June.
And um. So I, I do have an extra one and probably maybe one or two of the other counselors will have an extra question.
Why?
Seem to be going pretty, pretty smooth and quick. Um, so I'll just open it up um, with the first question. Tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
Okay, I can certainly do that. Um. I am not, I am originally from North Carolina, that's where I was born and raised. And then uh, I was attracted by the opportunity to go into the service. So I spent thirty-four years in the US Army. And I married a girl from, well, actually it's kind of from Portland, but her family had a, a place out. Uh, near Big Eddie. And uh, so we decided that this would be a good place to, to live. After I took a good look at this over the years, is more or less what I did is I kind of stabilized my family here and did all the world things. Um, so did the army thing, I retired as a colonel. My education is I have a uh, a bachelor's degree from a place called Methodist University in History. And I have three master's degrees. I have uh, one in planning, strategic planning. I have one in uh, management. And I also have one in uh, in business. And a PhD from the University of Phoenix in Leadership and Management. So that just tells you that through those years in the army, I had a little bit of time to. Do a little bit of study and okay, and I'd like to do that. I mean, I just like to learn things. So that was the deal that I had there. So. We got back to Vernonia, retired two thousand thirteen. Uh, went to work for a place called Benjamin Moore Paints in Vancouver. And I was the West Coast Distribution Manager for that organization for about five years. And then all of a sudden, the opportunity came to. Run a gun store. And I saw that opportunity and I said, boy, that would just be something that I would really like to do. Um, and I bought that place, we did a smart, and about two years ago. And I've been down there uh, doing the best I can with it for the last two years. Um, married. Have one son. And uh, we just love it, we just love Vernonia. That's why I'm here, because I love Vernonia. So uh. That's, that's me. So questions about that, I'd be happy to entertain.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah. So it sounds like you're really educated. What do you, do you think that's an advantage for being on council?
I do, and here's why. I think it's an advantage because during my army service, I was kind of like the mayor. Of a couple places, right? One of them was a place called Crane, Indiana, which is a ammunition organization that's probably about the size of an Indiana county. Because of the way that it's laid out. Uh, so I did all the management for everything, uh, you know, ran the, the operations and things like that for the. The city per se, which is really a federal activity. And then also I did the same thing for a place in Misal, Germany. When I commanded the organization there. And was kind of the mayor and the, the person that looked after the installation itself. So I have a little bit of experience or, well, I like to think more than a little bit of experience. With doing those management practices, you know, that involve budgeting. Uh, that involve facilities, that involve all the things it takes to keep a place running.
Okay, so. You realize if you're on council, you're not gonna be managing it, you're not gonna be running it, you're one of five. The mayor runs the meeting, you're gonna be the new guy on the block. Um. It's not like. You have to work together and it, 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 yeah, it's, so I'm not sure if those. Those qualifications are gonna help, I think, in your general. Uh, ability to assess situations. But you're, you're not gonna be running the whole show, so to speak. I mean, I'm sure you realize that, I just want you to be aware.
I do.
We're only one of five, just like me, if I say something and I think I'm right, doesn't matter, I only get one vote, so.
Right. And I do think that that is not a problem, because in addition to the, the things that I just talked about. I work like that almost every day with the Vernonia Senior Center, as being the president of the Vernonia Senior Center. And then I also am a former commander and a first vice commander for the American Legion. So working with those organizations, you know, is, is something that I haven't done a lot. And I suspect, I don't know, Rick, is that those meetings, you know, when I'm, I'm working in those meetings? And there's a lot of different personalities that are there. So you have to work with folks. And I pride myself on being able to work with almost anybody.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm done.
Oh, my question.
Yeah, good thing. You, you gave a question.
Give a long one to Charlie, sorry. Um.
Not you, JR.
So number two. Based on your experience or general awareness of the city. What do you consider to be the strengths and challenges for the city?
Okay. Um, I think the strength of the city is the smallness. Okay, I think the strength of the city is the. It's Vernonia. It, it is just a nice, small town in a great place to live. And a great place to raise kids. And uh, people are friendly and people help each other and people work together. At least for the most part, with a lot of people I've dealt, there are always exceptions, right? But at the same time, I don't think there's any other place in the world I'd wanna live. You know what? I, I just don't think there is. And I have been around the world and seen some really interesting places. And this uh, this place is a small town environment that is just. And people would dream about it, they knew it about it.
Okay, and the challenges?
I think with this place, there's just challenges that everybody else experiences. And I think there's challenges with. Of course, this COVID thing that's going on right now, I think that creates a whole new set of challenges that just multiplies. All right, I think there's challenges with. Crime, all right, I do think there's some challenges with that. Um. I think there's challenges with drugs, I don't care anything about them, just to be quite honest with you, I don't. I think that is part of society that has, has kind of become out of control over time, all right? Um, so JR, I'm telling you that this place is not unique to challenges that you would hear about if you were to flip on the. The television for the most part, except some of the craziness that goes on in different places. We have challenges, you know? Um, and uh, the only way that we're gonna get after our challenges is work together as a community to. To uh, to make it a better place. And I mean, work together. We can't, no one can do it alone. It's got to be a team effort. And it's got to be one of those things where we encourage people to get involved. Um, so it's kind of really like, you know, let's, let's encourage people to step up to the plate. We can't chase them away, we wanna encourage. So I have, those are the challenges of a city.
Thank you.
Don.
Good. You've given us some of the background in your application. And in this discussion, what do you feel are strengths that you can bring to the council?
Okay, I think I can bring some uh, some budgeting strength, okay? I can, I can do that. As a small business owner, I'm required to make sure that I watch those things and understand those things. Uh, I could definitely bring the leadership piece to it. I um, led large organizations and small organizations. And then with my community experience, I think I can also bring that kind of team building thing. You know, and the perspective of working with other people without. You know, being intrusive or things like that. I am a really good listener. All right, and I like to, when I, when I hear a problem or I hear like that, I like to think through both sides of it. And really just step back and see, because everybody believes that their position is right. Okay, I don't believe it. And you gotta be careful when you deal with that, because you're really kind of dealing with some strong personalities sometimes and things like that. Um, but at the end of the day, you have to do the right thing for the city. All right, it's the right thing for the most people. Does that answer your questions, Rick?
Yes.
Do you, you wanna pick up number three?
Yeah.
Sorry. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city this current time?
I would consider the most important challenge that is, is, is kind of the growth of the city overall. Um, it's a great place to live, it's a great place to work. But at the same time, we have to be kind of cautious when we look at how the city grows. And make sure we could pay for it. Um, it's, it's, I looked at my tax bill and I was like, whoa. Um, so I, I think it's important that we step back and we think about things when we're talking about growth and things like that and really make sure that we're. We're doing the right thing for the long term in the city. And, and just keeping in mind that it is a long-term decision when you start to do growth. Or even then when you start to reduce that, you know? So I, I, it's just something that I always seem to think about. How big do you want Vernonia to be? I mean, you, and we all live here. How big do we want Vernonia to be? But there is a, there's a right place for it to be. We just gotta look at it and, and think about it. So I think that's one that I would just jump on first.
Thank you. JR. So you talk about growth of the city. In your opinion. How big is too big for Vernonia?
It all depends on the money, JR.
At fifty percent, at a hundred percent?
I, I would have to look at, eh, when I would have to look at it and look at the resources, okay? There are a couple things. What does it bring to the community? What does the growth bring, right? Does it bring some type of benefit, economic benefit or something like that? Um. Is it a drain on the resource that we already have? I mean, I just have to think through each one as an individual decision as you go through and you look at those things. But it needs to be looked at very closely and it needs to be thought through. I mean, everybody needs to play by the rules too. I mean, if we have rules. The bottom line, if I'm thinking through something, we already have an established rule for something. And we need to follow the rules. I mean, there are some uh. We, we just need to be careful, because if we start to do something for somebody. And we're not doing something for somebody else and there's a rule for it. We really need to think through the fact that there's a rule, let's, let's do it. If it's not a good rule, let's change it.
Yeah.
Right? But it's, it's got to be uh, it's got to be fair. It's gotta be fair.
That's a good answer, but I wanna get a direct answer about population. Right now, we're at about roughly two thousand. Would Vernonia still be Vernonia at five thousand, ten thousand, or twenty thousand? Is there a, a number in your head that would change Vernonia to the worst?
Okay, now you're asking for a personal question, I say yes. I said, if Vernonia were to get up in those higher numbers. Like uh, like twenty thousand or something like that, I think we're gonna be looking at. A Portland suburb, okay? And because you know who's gonna fill those places in. And not that I don't like all those people and everything like this, but I moved to Vernonia. To live in an environment where my kids can walk down the street without somebody bothering them. Okay, and you know, when you get a mix of folks in here, uh, the growth thing can be kind of complex. And uh, I don't, I don't know, JR, if. Those bigger numbers that we talk about is what I envision Vernonia to be.
First one.
Okay.
That's exactly what I was looking for. Just a straight answer on that. Where were we?
Hectorick.
Yes, Hectorick.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Vernonia in the next two years?
I think infrastructure is something that is going to always be a challenge. Um, geez, I don't know how you guys keep up with it as it is. Okay, there's so many things out there that need help. So I think infrastructure is probably the number one thing. I think like JR was talking about, I think growth. Because I do think there's potential for people wanting to have this place grow. I don't know how exponential that is. I've seen some growth out on Rose Avenue. Right? I mean, they're right down Cleveland Road, I see some things going on down there. Um, I'm not terribly excited about it, right? Because uh, you know, you live in your little dream place out there. So uh, so those are things, and then I think there is some opportunity, okay? Out of all this thing, there's opportunity. I think there's opportunity to do good things for people if we do it smart. All right, if we, if we do our parks and we do our things like that and we get the things that people, I think that'll kind of help, you know? Help, help what we got going on here by keeping that, the Vernonia that we have. You know, so they're all challenges, but they're all opportunities. With every challenge, with every, when a door closes, a window opens, okay? That's my, my perspective on life. When a door closes, a window opens. I mean, I'm sitting here with you guys for the second time. All right, and if I didn't think I could do this, I wouldn't be here. All right, if I don't think, and if I didn't think I could do some good things and work with you guys, I wouldn't be here. All right, I wouldn't be here.
Okay, number six.
Six.
Yeah. In the last few years, the city council has averaged over sixty meetings a year. There will also be additional meetings for boards and commissions that you will be expected to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend these meetings?
Yes. Every one of them that is my duty to attend and every one of them that is my responsibility to do and everything that is, is gonna be good for the community, yes. And I have that, I have that flexibility, all right? Like I say, I'm a one-man show, I'm here down the road. But also you have to understand what that business is to me. That business is mine. I'm already retired two times, all right? So when I wanna go do something else, I close the place up. I go do what I wanna do. That's why I'm also sitting here, because I know I've thought through this. And I said, and I asked that same question to myself. Am I gonna be able to do the meetings? Am I gonna be able to do a planning board or whatever I'm doing? And the answer to that is yes, because I'll make the time to do it, because this is the right thing to do. And if I commit to it, I'm committed to it. Been thirty-some years in the army, that's a commitment. Okay? So when I commit to something, I commit to something. Senior Center, they asked me to do that, I'm committed to it, I do it. I commit to it, I do it.
Thank you.
Question seven. City councils sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you and your decision you have made?
Okay, I have very thick skin. All right, there are some people in this town, I'm sure, that don't approve what I do anyway. All right, I, I, I'd be, Don, quite honestly, I'm in a thing down there where probably half the town doesn't like what I do. And then the other half of the town is all on board with it, okay? So at the same time, what you've got to do is you gotta work with people. Long as you treat people like you wanna be treated yourself, you're never gonna go wrong. Now, there's gonna be a point where somebody says, and I think, that's not the way to go. I'm gonna speak my mind, but I'm gonna give you a reason why I think that's so, okay? And I'm not gonna make a decision without thinking through it, all right? Without looking at what we're thinking about and thinking about why it's not good or why it is good. You know, so, believe you me, the popular, this is not a popularity contest, this is the city. This is the city council. We're trying to do the right things for, for the city, right? You don't have to worry about my feelings getting hurt. It's hard to do. Okay.
I have a follow-up on that one. Yeah, so recently. A group of our citizens came to council and um. We get requests all the time for things, but this one was turned away. As for now, um, basically the gist of it was they wanted to um. Put Indigenous Peoples' Day in place of Columbus Day. What are your thoughts on that?
It sounds very interesting. Um, I guess my thoughts on that is why. Why do we wanna change it? I guess I'd have to listen to the discussion that was going on to figure out why they wanna do it. I'm sure that they're very adamant about wanting to change it. But my real question is, is how many years have we had Columbus Day? I could go back and look, I mean, it's very, very, very hundred years or something like that before, and now we're wanting to change it. You know, change is kind of a. You know, change is kind of a, one of those things that is just really up or down. Everybody needs to change, true? We all change every day. I mean, I suspect we probably looked a little different twenty or thirty years ago, right? We change. But at the same time, there's change, there's positive change. And then there's sometimes change, I think, that is about an agenda. And it's about an agenda that is being pushed for reasons that aren't good for the whole, okay? So I don't know, I didn't hear the whole discussion about what was going on. But my real question was, why, what's the motivation? Why are we doing this, you know?
Well, the motivation was allegedly Christopher, Christopher Columbus, and some of it's in his diary. Was not nice to some of the indigenous people and they feel that the indigenous people of America, it's an insult to them basically, to have a celebration of Christopher Columbus. And they wanna put their day on top of his day.
Well, then, you know, Christopher Columbus had that day for a whole lot of years. What's wrong with having another day for indigenous people if they wanna do something like that? Why don't we have Viking Day, right?
I think that was just, we could pick another day and we'd all been fine with it.
We'd all been fine with another day, right? But see, what you got is you got that, you, you're looking at those folks and you're saying, there's a, there's something deeper that you're coming up with this for, okay? You're pushing some type of agenda.
Well, it might not be an agenda, it might just be the way they feel. And sometimes, and this gets back to the counselor, is sometimes you have to say no. To that, I would probably, it could be your personal feeling, it could be your feeling that it's for what the majority of the community that you represent would really want, not just fraction of the community.
To me, JR, I would probably, based on what we've said so far, is I would probably said no, okay? Instead, if they wanna do an indigenous person's, person's day, then I would look to some other day, okay? And that, really, if you think about it, there's might be some people out there that are really into Columbus Day. You know, I don't know what the, if, if there's a lot of folks that are out there, but there are some people that would say, well, why would you change Columbus Day, right? And the easy answer to that would have been, well, okay, I agree that indigenous people should have their due part. And let's just do it some other time so we don't step on somebody else's toes. That's kind of that compromise that you have when you set up at a table. You know, I'm sure somebody would be throwing something if you just say, oh, yeah, well, let's just take Columbus out of it, right? Oh, here we come. I'll be lined up at my store the next day saying, why'd you change Columbus Day, right?
Well, nobody's came and complained about it. The newspaper is probably the one that complains the most, so that's just kind of the way it goes.
Newspaper?
When you're on city council. You might not hear about it from the, uh, constituents, but you'll probably hear about it from time to time in the paper. So just, if you're on council.
I don't wanna go down the, the road with the newspaper.
You just have to, that's what you used to talk about.
Let me tell you a story, okay? Because I gotta tell you the story in complete honesty, just Scott Laird would not even come into my shop. Okay? He sends his wife in to deliver the papers. Alright? So, I got him. He, he, he has deep feelings about things, just like other people have deep feelings about things. But I'm not gonna treat Scott Laird any different than I'm gonna treat anybody else, okay? I mean, I'm not mad at him, I'm not, okay? I'm not gonna treat him unfairly or anything like that. I mean, if he doesn't like what I do, okay, that's, this is America. That's why I fought for thirty-some years, to do what I wanna do. And he should, and I, people should respect that, you know, it's kind of a respect. You know, so I'm gonna respect him and, and if he doesn't respect me, it's okay, he has that right.
Done, JR?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Dale, you got a question?
No.
Okay.
Donnie's.
Isn't it? I'm good, we're ready for our next question?
Yep.
Yeah. What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
What I'd like to accomplish is, as a council member, is to build relationships in the town. Get more people involved in doing things with the town, because I think there's strength in numbers, okay? And I'll tell you, I, be, once again, be quite honest with you. I wanna see, I have a vision of Vernonia, of a small town where, all those things I originally said. I see that vision, I would not want to see this place turn into a suburb of Portland, okay? I don't wanna see that, I don't. I mean, there are a lot of great things we can do here, right? A lot of great things we can do. At the same time, I don't wanna see it turn into something, something different that I don't think any of us, and I'm not speaking for you, but y'all been here much longer than I have, okay? I just don't wanna see that. So I think by working with everybody, I think it's just build this, build ourselves up, you know? And work with folks and get some more people out there to work and with us. And try to make it a better place. And there, we can do it, we can do it.
I get the redundant question. Do you have the time to vote to this job?
See. I do. And once again, I'll go back and reiterate that there is a meeting, I'll be at the meeting. If there's a responsibility, I'll do the responsibility, because that's just in my DNA, okay? It's just the way I, I operate. I, I guarantee you, if I tell you I'm going to do something, I will either do it or die trying to do it, alright? Because my word is my bond and it is the thing about me that I, it's, it's about integrity, alright? You don't ever want, if, if everybody coming to you and say, oh, I'll take care of that for you. And then all of a sudden, nobody shows up. And then you're like, wow, right? How do you feel like when somebody does that to you? And once again, go back to my mantra, right? Treat people like you like to be treated yourself. I tell you, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it, I'll be on time. I tell you, I'm gonna be here at nine o'clock, be here at nine o'clock. Wasn't here at nine o'clock, cause she called me, Stephanie, so I'm early. But still, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
I was ready. All I had to do, jump in the car and come.
Yeah, speaking of meetings, I was at the senior board meeting when you were asked to replace Eileen Grady. And, and you gracefully accepted it right within a couple of minutes. And, and then I was a part of meetings, um, oh, at least half a dozen. When you took over as president of the senior board and, and you were there every meeting and on time. And you were in a really good meeting and I was impressed, so. Yeah, I, I see how you run a meeting. It, it basically gave me some reinforcement in how I, how I do my things in here in chamber. And it gave me a little boost and, and, uh, thank you for that.
I appreciate that, that's very kind of you. But, but like I say, it's part of a team, right? I'm not here, I definitely don't wanna be the guy who's running things. You will find that in a meeting, if we have, when we have council meetings, that I will listen a lot, okay? Listen a lot. I will say my mind, but I won't be saying my mind, delight and listen, because listening is a whole lot more powerful than, than, than the, the words that are spoken, you know? You gotta understand something where you go out there. Because once you say something, like we say, on record, right? Once you say it, it's there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
What do you think about expanding the urban growth boundary to add more acres to the city?
I don't know. I don't, I really need to look and study that, okay? I think growth is, I think growth's okay. Like I said, I just need, I need to be careful about how we grow, what we're gonna do. And, and look how that, you know, the real thing, the real key and the real measure of that is to look at that and say, alright, if we do this, what's gonna happen in two years? What's gonna be like in five years? Cause if we grow here, are we not gonna grow some here, right? And you gotta look at the whole big, it's a big picture thing. Growth is a big picture thing, because once you do it, well, you're, you kinda opened the box, right? And if you do it for one, what's the next time when somebody comes in here and asks to do it? Are you gonna say, oh, not for you? And they're gonna say what? Well, you did it for him. So you, I mean, you gotta be careful, that's, that's walking in a minefield. Um, and once again, that's just a part of setting back and thinking about it and studying it. And talking amongst each other, right? And saying, what do you think? You know, cause a lot of times I'll talk to JR or something, you say, JR, what do you think? And sometimes there are things that JR might say that I had no perspective on. Now, is he gonna, is he gonna change my mind about something? He could, right? Because of the information he had, right? So now I ask a lot of questions, alright? It wasn't, I won't get ridiculous, because I also like to go home or at on time. You know, my meetings, right? My meetings, when they start at one time, they usually end right about when it ends. But, um, I ask questions, I, I try to get enough knowledge to decide before I open my mouth, my big mouth and stick my foot in it. My wife would probably say I'm pretty fair to that sometimes.
I'm glad you asked. So if selected on council, there's consideration of expanding the urban growth boundary and bringing in this section behind the school, the boot, we call it, possibly into the city limits for the next forty, fifty years of growth or something.
The urban growth boundary, correction.
Yeah, the urban growth boundary.
Yeah.
The city council talks about bringing this into the city limits.
That'd be if the owners decided to annex. The city would be forcing the urban growth boundary.
Okay, correct.
And force the.
So the urban growth boundary moved to here, and then if these owners wanna come in, they can come in and pay the more taxes and develop the lots. But that would give this opportunity here around the school for, for the new communities and stuff. So that's just something that we're considering and working through the process. So I just kinda wondered, uh, what your thoughts on that would be? And I know you got involved in some of the conversations, but if on council, you're gonna get involved in them one day suddenly, so, uh, anyway.
Okay, so the first question I have, in almost any situation, the size is what's it gonna cost the city, okay? Cause we've got a budget, right? I assume we all have a budget. So what's it gonna cost us? And I don't know if there's any cost involved with it or anything like that. If I'm sitting here just looking at the map and I'm going, well, that doesn't sound like a horrible idea, because you got all the city stuff that's already going on around, all around it, right? And then I gotta step back and ask another question and say, well, why hasn't it gone into the city before now? You know? Why haven't we done something with this before now? But the number one question I will always have on my mind is how much does it cost us, okay? I mean, is this gonna be something that's gonna make us money? Is this gonna be something that ends up being an Achilles heel? We're in the future, it's gonna hurt us, okay? But I mean, quite honestly, by just my initial observations, why haven't we done it already? If it was such a good deal.
Thank you, Charlie.
I have one last question, Charlie. And I've asked this, uh, I will ask this to all the applicants. In light of increased crime rates, both nationally and locally here in Vernonia, and the recent incidents of vandalism and arson within our city limits, how would you prioritize these problematic issues?
Hate to ruin record right now. And I know what I'd say, okay? I think crime is a problem, alright? I think vandalism is a problem. I worry about crime and vandalism every day. Why? Cause I'm a small business owner, because I have some stuff down there that I really would prefer not having stolen, alright? And I'm a homeowner and I don't want people coming into my stuff and messing with my things, okay? I think it's high on my list. I, I think if it has to do with criminal activity, it's not the Vernonia I wanna live in. It's just not something that I wanna put up with. I mean, I need, and I don't want everybody's feelings, but I mean, doggone it, we, we need to get after it and we need to stop it, it just needs to stop.
Okay, there's a second part of my question and it's, give me one, offer me one solution to mitigate crime or, or.
I, I think what you, that's a.
To help protect the.
No, that's a great question.
And well-being of the citizens of Vernonia.
I think that's a great question. I think there's a couple of things that we could do. I think, you ever heard the concept of community policing? I think by having community policing, it helps. And with community policing, that's when the police are out there and they are, they are communicating with people. They are seeing what is going on and they are not sitting in an office somewhere, but they are out on the street doing things, okay? That's one thing. The second thing I think that would help, and once again, I hate him on record here, that I would say something a little different, but we need to educate people, okay? Cause a lot of things that happen when it comes to criminal activity and things like that can be prevented if people are being more observant and they are seeing what is going on. And they are reporting things that are going on, because if you put enough heat on the bad guy, he is gonna go to a place that's where easier pickets, right? Now, I don't think that it's a great idea just to shift the problem out of town, although that is, if it goes away, it goes away, right? Um, but if you put heat on bad guys, they will go someplace else. Pressure, a little bit of pressure. And I'm certainly not suggesting that we target people, you know, because that would be unfair, right? But at the same time, we know, I've been here long enough to know kinda who's doing things, right? And maybe it might not be a bad idea to, to just gonna keep an eye on what's going on. Right? Just cause, you remember those neighborhood wa-watches things that were popular? Where you had the neighborhood watch stuff and they would have people that would do things and things like that? It's not a terrible idea if you could find people to do it. And I think there's probably enough people out there who are tired of it, that they want to do something like that.
Paul?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Charlie, you said just now, and I believe once before, that you hate saying this because you're on record.
Right.
If you're on this job, you're gonna be on record, everything you say. And if you're afraid of saying something because it's recorded, you're not gonna be able to say what you think. So.
That's true.
I'm curious why you said that.
Okay, because I was gonna tell you, I was, I was just gonna do a joke when we said that, when we talked about the crime thing here. I was gonna say, well, the best thing to do is just have a gun say it, alright? And it, and it, and I know how to keep the humor out of unofficial media, right? So I can say it in another way without, it, it, cause I am the kinda guy who loves sarcasm. I don't know why, it's just in my nature, alright? And, and that's what I try to watch sometimes.
So you're worried about your sense of humor being taken. So you're worried about your sense of humor being taken the wrong way?
Correct. Because if, sometimes that would have, you, you know as well as I do, if you say something to somebody, it's gonna offend somebody. So you, you, you just gotta step back, and of course, I would never say, I hate we're on record. I wouldn't say that, right? We just sit back and say, well, I don't have a gun, so, but let's say it like this, you know? Maybe we need to have more armed citizens. You see what I'm saying?
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
I've got kinda two, and I asked the last one too. How many paid jobs do you have right now, Charlie? What? What? How many volunteer jobs do you got? Three. Okay. And the volunteer jobs is, I volunteered to do things at the church. I volunteered to do things at Legion, and I volunteered to do things at the seniors. But none of them are overwhelming. Okay, there's a, there's, there's a real, real, real key to having great people that you work with, right? Because they, if you work together, it, it never becomes overwhelming. Good.
Can I follow up with a question?
Absolutely.
If selected for council, will you be able to, uh, perform your duties and hold the seat at the seniors?
No, I'm not gonna be able to do that anymore. I think that's a conflict of interest, obviously.
It is.
Rick about that?
Well, how, can someone explain to me how that is?
I'll investigate, that might not be accurate. I don't know, it would be, I don't know that it would be conflict of interest, the problem might be that the seniors are tenant. But try to investigate if that came up.
If, I would.
Got three clues.
I was offered this, if I was allowed to do that, and it was a conflict of interest, I'd be more than happy to be the liaison from the city council to the senior center.
So if it's workable, would you be willing to do both?
If it's workable, it keeps the job. Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure he'll have to step down, because I am, being the mayor, in, in the seat I hold, I cannot be on the senior board. I'm a liaison from the city to the board, and I attend all the meetings just to keep that connection with the city, uh, but I'm.
I would investigate.
But see.
They actually don't even want to start a liaison.
So.
Right, but he wouldn't be a liaison, so that could be the difference.
Remember.
He could be, I could turn it over.
No, I mean, he's not a liaison.
No.
So it could be the difference, and you're the liaison, so you couldn't be on the board and be the liaison, the way I understand it.
I cannot serve on the senior board, because I'm the office I hold.
Right. If I were to, if I were to be accepted for the city council, and I had to turn, tried to resign from doing that, or at least defer it, okay? Because, uh, if I'm not on the, the city council in the future, then I'll go back to the senior center and serve with them again, because it's something that I think is a great thing for the community personally, so, yeah.
I would investigate if they could, but that's not a problem.
Yeah, if you let me know, I mean, we'll go either way. I just, I don't wanna do anything wrong, that's for sure.
I will let you do that.
Yeah, step me, keep you straight on that one.
Uh-huh.
Fine, you need that though, sometimes you need that.
Hidden things that you don't see today, you might see tomorrow, and you're going, uh-oh, we got a problem.
Right, yeah. So I kinda do that almost every day. All I gotta do is run a small business, and you'll see problems pop up every minute.
You know, he, he might be able to continue on as president, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I never said that you couldn't be a boardroomer.
Oh.
I know where that came from, but I would investigate it.
There's three vacancies now, so I'm sure they're gonna be glad to hear that, if that's true.
Yeah, so regardless, I'll look into it and let everyone know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Okay. And like I said, I will say, if I'm allowed to stay, I'll stay in whatever capacity that's reasonable, that we can do. Cause I don't wanna give it up, because things are really going pretty good over there.
Oh, yeah. So. Well, if there's no other questions, uh, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you for your time this morning, Charlie, and.
Well, I would like to thank you, but now it looks like I'm going to work.
Yeah. Stank around.
A little bit more than I maybe I thought I was gonna be doing.
So if anybody wants to join.
We're, we're doing that, we're putting up the, the garlands at the, so they've decided that I am the best person with the tool to put the zip ties on all those things.
Oh, okay. Thank you for your time and your candidacy.
No, thank you for your time, I know it's Saturday, okay? And like I said, if we had a meeting like this, and you said we were doing this on Saturday, this is exactly where I'd be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be contacting everybody on Monday, letting, um, all of our interviewees know what this decision was, and then whoever was selected will be sworn in on Monday at seven o'clock at council meeting, which is virtual.
That is not a problem, I have already got my computer fired up, and I know how to do that, and I have actually linked into the meetings. Uh, already done a test run on it.
Perfect.
Good.
Good job.
Uh, now that's thinking ahead.
Yeah, that's thinking ahead.
Cause I do look forward to working with you, I hope I get the opportunity to work with you, okay? I, I'll be quite honest with you. I would not be here again unless I thought I had something to offer you and help, and it's something that I really think I wanna do. All right, really.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. Questions, are we all done? I'm kinda just sitting here now.
I have to go to work.
I gotta go to work now. All right.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you very much, you all be the same.
Thank you, Charlie.
Remember the gun stores there, if you need anything?
Yeah.
See ya.
Got any ammo? Do ya? All right.
So we're gonna, are you just wanting to recess?
Yeah, at nine fifteen.
Honored as ever.
Well, yeah. Probably is expected.
How've you been? Okay.
All right.
Good.
Very, very, very busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, work doesn't stop.
No. Well, welcome again.
Thank you.
We'll open up the session before we start our questions.
Nine fifty-six.
Oh.
Just as a reminder, this is a public meeting, therefore you are being recorded.
Thank you for that. I will try to speak distinctly and clearly.
We've, uh, we're gonna ask basically the same questions as we did in June, I believe. And there might be one or two extra ones from us.
Okay, are those gonna be the same questions that have asked of other people?
Yes.
Okay.
Precisely. At least the question I had, I've asked all, with you, I've asked the other two applicants as well, the same question.
Perfect, thank you.
So I'll begin. Welcome again, and first question is, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
So my name is Susan Wagner. I moved to Vernonia in 2006 after a search throughout the greater Portland and I'm not sure what our designation is, but northwest Oregon. My husband got a job and we sold our house in Colorado and moved here, not having a house, high to the market. Kept being drawn to Vernonia and every house I looked at that I really wanted to be in was here. But it seemed too far. My husband went on a drive one day and goes, what do you think of Vernonia? And I went, oh, here's the houses you need to go look at. We bought a house, almost bought a house across from storage, too. Thankful we didn't because rather than being a victim of the flood, I was able to volunteer to help after the flood. I showed up two days later and Jim Tierney said, sit. And I did for forty-five minutes and then got to work. We, we put in, you know, eighteen and twenty-hour days sometimes for those first couple of weeks. After that, you know, fifteen, sixteen hours a day, I was either here at City Hall working, you know, just crazy with the flood recovery, just volunteered, jumped in. I said, you know, this is my community, I wanna help. So that turned into a real job with Community Action Team. I have continued to be involved in Vernonia community activities through the Economic Development Committee. I was on for quite, let's see, the two years I believe that they were in existence or rebooted. It was a city-driven committee. I've been on the Budget Committee for the city. I've been on City Council for the city. I have been on school board, both appointed and elected twice now. And I, prior to being on school board, I did work with the schools for a short time in special education and then did a lot of volunteer work because my youngest was a student from fifth grade and then graduated at Vernonia High School. I contribute a lot financially because I am not as physically able as some people to participate. So a lot of my giving is cash.
Okay. Number two, JR.
Okay, based on your experience or general awareness of the city, what do you consider the strengths and challenges for the city?
The strengths of the city are its people. I mean, there is no doubt about it that in this community, when something happens, people pull together. It's also one of the most interesting dynamics I've ever seen in a city where people can be absolutely unhappy with each other and a lot of vitriol, whether it's verbal, not usually verbal, mostly on public or social media. But then, when something happens, they may be the worst of enemies on Facebook or whatever, but that person will be there to assist when that other person is in need. And it seems to be truly community-wide. I have, Rick used to ask me, my husband Rick, used to ask me, what took me so long to get through the grocery store? Because you've been here, you know, this short of time, you don't know anybody. It's like, well, everybody talks and everybody wants to engage. And I think that's, that's still truly the ultimate strength of Vernonia. Challenges are also the people sometimes. In addition to that, other than, other than that, that simple answer, how to best support a community like Vernonia with a very small tax base? We don't have a lot of businesses that support the tax base. We don't have a lot of outside income, you know, people, travelers, visitors, vacationers, we have some, but not to the level of a lot of other cities. And that, I think, is our biggest challenge, is how do we bring more funds in? Do you have further?
Okay, question three. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city?
I hate going back to money all the time. Money seems to be the root of most issues. Can you repeat the question because I wanna make sure I am addressing it correctly?
Okay. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a cha- a challenge to the city?
Right now, I believe there are many challenges. I believe one of the most important, it may not be the most important on everyone's list, is growth and how to manage it. I believe that we, we have an opportunity in the market right now and have for several years because Vernonia is a, an engaging place, it's a welcoming place. It's a, it's a community that is working towards all of the things that people want in a place to live, in a, in a place they can call home. And in order to do that, we need to be able to manage the growth and provide opportunities for growth without impinging on what a lot of people feel is, is their right to keep Vernonia just as it is today. And the challenge of that particular thing is that if you don't continue to grow, you're not gonna be able to maintain what we have. And we've done remarkable things, you know, with the new wastewater systems and, and we've got great backbone as far as staffing and just, it is so important to keep that moving forward. And I believe that, that, that growth, and I think that, that spreads across a lot of different sectors of the community. I think that is our challenge.
Yes, I think, a follow-up on that, I think I asked the same basic question to the last two candidates on this growth issue, Susan. Vernonia is roughly 2,000 people, it's been around that pretty much the forty years that I've lived here. It goes up and down with different floods and economic times, but what would you consider the limit for our population, be it 5,000, 10,000, 20,000, where we lose Vernonia and it's never gonna be the same for the worse?
That's a very, a very wise question. There are limitations built into Vernonia as a city without the whole urban growth boundary expanding. And I believe that right now, I, I, it's been a challenge with, with allowing, with, with the count of what, what they're considering buildable properties. I, I would like to see Vernonia stay under 5,000. I think, I, I believe that a community around that or under, maybe a little over, I mean, 5,000 is a kind of arbitrary number, still maintains its, its integral feeling of being a small town, particularly with Vernonia being multi-directional. It goes up the river, goes left, it's, you know, it's basically big L. So you don't see all of the people, you don't see all of the buildings, you don't see all of the houses. It's not like a, a intensely built downtown. And it will never be because it's just not close enough to anything. But I believe that, that the infrastructure we have can be expanded carefully, with enough money, to support, maybe not exactly within the city limits, but expanding, you know, some housing outside that would still bring funds into the community because they're hopefully in the shop. And if you expand the population, you are going to encourage other types of businesses to start coming in and establishing themselves because, yes, we've got a grocery store that can easily support that. But if you've got more people, more businesses are gonna look at Vernonia as potential rather than saying, oh, it's 2,200 people, you know, 2,000 people, we're not interested in putting up a store there. Or we're not interested in servicing them through supplying a different store. Does it answer your question?
Yes, thank you. If I'm number four. You've given us some of your background in your application and then in this discussion, what do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
So one of the strengths I believe I bring is my past experience of different, different communities and places I've lived and the experiences I've had in those communities. Southern California, I lived in what I thought was a small town of 110,000 and was involved with the schools. I developed a paralegal program through a local community college and worked in the legal field. I moved to Colorado, worked at the schools, became a school board member of a charter school, helped develop it and move it into their next stage of becoming a K through 12 and expanding. And worked as a small business owner. I started with eBay in nineteen ninety-eight and continued that throughout California, Colorado, and here. Here, I, I became very involved in, in grant writing, in working with flood recovery, becoming a school board member, becoming a planning commission member, becoming a member of city council, becoming a member of the school board. So I think I bring a, a different background. I come from a, a different socioeconomic and cultural background. And I think that's one of the things that I do bring to the table is is all of those experiences, being able to combine them all and then make decisions based on those objective inputs.
Thank you.
Okay, what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Vernonia in the next two years?
Three most? I believe the three most that come to mind immediately are growth and managing it, working with direct, the, the relationship with the planning commission to encourage their input and making sure that growth is going to be foremost in their minds when they are looking at, at different things that come to them or directing them with their tasks to address growth and the future of the growth. Our streets. Our streets, and I know we work on them every year. But that, to me, you know, I go through a pothole that has now kind of put my car out of whack every single day. Can't avoid it. Go over slow still is a problem. But all of the, all of the streets that have not been addressed. I mean, I know that we have various levels of, of need that have been identified. But it would be, it would be great if we could address more of them at a time. And I don't know that that's a possibility. But it, to me, it is, it's an important thing because it is the face of our community. And bringing in more business. I know that through the associate, the economic development program that they're working on. I think that that is the basis of bringing in more people and encouraging more people to stay in town, to do their shopping, to do their business, and to make it more inviting, not just to the outside world, but our community as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number six here. In the last few years, the city councils average 60 meetings a year. There'll also be additional meetings for boards and commissions that you'll expect to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend these meetings?
Absolutely. I believe that there have been very, very few meetings that I ever missed over my tenure of all of the different committees and councils and boards that I've been on.
Okay, question seven. City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you and your decision you have made?
I like that question. Being a councillor, being a board member, being on a committee is never popular. I mean, at any time, you, you can pretty much figure 50% of the people are going to like what you do and 50% are not. That's not always the case. A lot of, you know, sometimes people come together about a subject that's to the benefit of all. But there are definitely times when you become the target of, of an unpopular decision. And it's just what you do. It's, it, you go into a job like this, a position like this, knowing that you are going to have to be the bad guy sometimes to make that unpopular choice. Just because everybody wants something does not make it the right thing necessarily. And it's just something you live with. You develop a thick skin and you just, you address it in a factual and a objective way. And you make your decision based on, based on fact, and you back it up and you, you stick to it. And if you've made a mistake, you own up to it.
Follow, yeah, go ahead. So, so I don't know if you were on the reading, Susan, but recently, a group, a small group in Vernonia came to council and basically requested that we get rid of Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this council rejected that basic request and more in favor of having a separate day for Indigenous Peoples' Day. What are your thoughts on that?
Yes, to everybody. Okay. So I was listening to the meeting when it occurred. I also listened to the meeting again after because I do that for every meeting when it's available. I, I have to say, I was very impressed with council's thought processes and discussion on this. Because I had not been exposed to that discussion much in the past. I'd heard, I, I know that, that the federal government had made that decision, had made the change of the name or was going to. I know that a lot of communities have. The questions that came up amongst this council were very interesting and very thought-provoking and things that I had not thought about. And while I'm not sure being only as, being not part of the actual conversation, only hearing the conversation, I'm not sure that I can give you an affirmative answer to how I would have, what I might have said or what I might have voted. But I certainly would have taken everything into consideration that was said, and very, very valid points were made. I mean, you cannot simply throw away history. And acknowledging, however, that the other half of that history is important as well. And I think that the, in all honesty, I believe that your recommendation or your request of making it two was a valid one and a very good one.
Thank you. Is it mine?
Yes.
What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
Work for the city. I don't have any set agenda. I never have. I am, I believe it's our job to, our job, I speak as if I am. I believe it is the job of city council to address what is going on in the community through the appropriate avenues of city council. I think city council has a very prescribeded job to do. And I believe that, I believe I'd be good at it. I think I was. I'd like to do it again.
All right, thank you.
So I can, I have the hardest question out of the 10?
Oh, yes.
Do you have the time to devote to this job?
Yes.
We got out of order here, didn't we?
Oh, did you?
Skip dog?
Oh, it's gone.
Because usually I do that redundant question.
Did you miss one?
No.
No, I don't think.
Okay.
We counted his.
Did I go out of order?
No, you're good. You're good.
Did we miss one? Okay.
No.
No. Do you want, do you want a further answer other than yes? I've already, I have.
That's most sufficient.
Okay, I'll do number 10 then. What do you think about expanding the urban growth boundary to add more acreage to the city?
I think I've already addressed that, but yes. I, that is something I have been involved in through flood recovery when we were able to expand it to include the, the school site. There was some expansion then. They would not work with us to expand it further. And that was a frustration. It was take it or fight the fight that was not going to be winnable in the time we needed in order to build the school quickly. I've often been frustrated with that. That was one of the reasons we ended up in the Vernonia area. Because looking at the cities that utilize urban growth boundary as a way of, of the infill and building more and more homes, you had no privacy. You had no, no ability to have, have a yard or have any decent amount of space around your home. And I think that that is one of the key things with Vernonia, one of the reasons we ended up here, is because it was, it's a great little town. It has a little downtown where, yes, you expect downtown to have a little more concentration. But so much of the properties outside of the core had, had enough land to make us feel comfortable. And I would love to see the urban growth boundary expanded more. It allows the city to become a more, I think, successful attraction for people wanting to buy homes or build homes. And I think that with, with good planning and foresight, I think that it is a workable thing to do. And I would like to see it done.
Okay, thank you. I have a follow-up on. Quick follow-up on that we did for everybody.
Yes.
You may know, you probably know, but if you don't, council is in consideration in the process of potentially expanding the urban growth boundary to include the booth here around the school. And then these landowners can potentially come in when they're ready or want to. Just wondering if your thoughts.
Do you have yours?
Yeah, that, that was something that we had pushed for. And I was part of that discussion at the time. And it made no sense to me, in all honesty, to have the booth not included. And I think it gives an opportunity for, as you said, those homeowners as they choose to, to come into the, into the city to create the area that really needs to be, or, or could be a potential for expansion of homes, home plots, different sized properties for people to be able to build on and become part of the community. So I, I personally, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And I, again, I've asked the previous two applicants the same question.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
In light of increased crime rates, both nationally and locally here in Vernonia, and the recent incidents of vandalism and arson within the city limits, how would you prioritize these problematic issues? And then I have another follow-up question after. Because it's a big problem going on.
Oh, yes. No, I, I am aware of that. I, it makes me incredibly sad. I would, I would, I wish I had had more time to look at the historical crime reports. Because I know when we first moved here, there was kind of an out, an outburst, if you want to call it that, of crime when we first came here and were kind of surprised. And a lot of it was drug-related. And, you know, people with addictions wanting cash. So they were stealing things and there was a lot of break-ins. And we actually got pretty concerned. What the heck? And then came to realize that the crime was just more noticeable because it's a small town. Not to say that, that what's going on now is not an increase, but it was our observation at the time. I, and it is a difficult, it's a different, difficult balance of how to deal with it. Do you get more police? But that's an expense to the city. How does the city pay for it? I believe that if, and it's my understanding that our budget or the budget for the city is five police officers. Is that true still? Well, let's make that presumption. If that is the presumption that it is five, it is very important for us to be at full staffing. I know that that is a challenge. I know getting police officers even to apply is hope. I believe that communication and training within the communities to improve things like neighborhood watches, just asking people to be more vigilant. If you see something, call it in. We may not have police, but if we don't call these things in and let the police know, then they, they don't have the backup to say, this is how many calls we had for these number of vandalism or break-ins or somebody stole something. Something's missing even doesn't have to, you don't have to prove that it's been stolen, but things are missing. If we don't have our community step up and say that, there's no solid evidence of what's going on. We may know it because our neighbor said something to us. But if they're not reporting it because they feel like the police aren't going to do anything anyway, that's part of the problem. Not, not trying to blame the victim. But if things are going on, they need to be addressed in, through proper channels. Again, I, I don't know how we go about, how the city goes about increasing our staffing in the police department. Because everybody's having that problem. I think that's going to start changing, I believe, next year, probably beginning to middle of next year. I think people are going to start being more comfortable going outside their bounds, going outside their homes, looking for more work. And we may be able to increase staffing in that way. I am hopeful. I think it's very important because if the, if the reputation of Vernonia is that it's a terrible place because there's crime all the time and people are, are, you know, it's kind of like the image of Portland, people aren't going to want to come here and they're not going to feel safe here. So to me, that is a priority. And is actually one of the three, probably more so one of the three important things we need to address.
Yeah, my, my second part of the question was answered your recent comments about increased police protection and, and, yeah, to keep the citizens safe in Vernonia here.
Agreed.
So, yeah, thank you for the, those answers.
You're welcome. Any others?
We are done.
Donnie.
I got.
Oh, Donnie's got two.
So how many paid position jobs do you have right now?
Aid position?
Yes.
One.
One. How many volunteer are you doing?
Well, as an elected school board member, there's one.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
I think. Yes.
There's another, no other committees or anything that you're, okay.
Yep. I've been asked by several over the past year or two. And I have respectfully declined for various reasons, including relationships to where I work, community action team. You know, we, I can't volunteer on a board for somebody who is, who we fund.
Yeah.
Basically. So, but no, that is, those are the only two things I do. A school board, which is once a month generally. And then, yeah, that's it.
Good. I think that. Anybody else? Well, thank you, Susan.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Stephanie has something to.
And I will be contacting all the applicants on Monday to let them know what the decision is of council. And we'll be swearing in the new member on Monday at the meeting at 7.
Okay.
We will be in touch.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Have a good weekend.
Thank you. You as well. Appreciate all your time. I know that this is not easy.
Thank you. Have a good weekend. You guys need to take a reading. You guys need to take a recess or do you want to just?
Want to recess for maybe five, 10 minutes? Sure, come back. All right, yep.
Recession at 10:30.
10:30.
And that was Charlie. That was my own personal opinion.
I totally agree. I think he did a better job this time.
And although I was, I, I was impressed with Cherie, Charisse the first time and again today. I thought she had some pretty good answers. Um, on a lot of the questions we asked. Uh. I think Susan would, it was pretty similar to the first interview we had with her. Um. One of the things I was a little concerned about with one of her answers was when she opened up, she talked about bringing some of her California and Colorado experiences to Veronia and you, and having those experiences down there. Come into this community and be synonymous. At least that's the way I kind of heard it. And I don't know if that's, I don't know.
Yeah, I took, I took that comment as kind of a, I'm a well-rounded person because I've been here.
Okay, well, that's, that's fair.
But I can see your, I can see your point.
Yeah, I kind of took it as she's trying to say she's more diversified because she's been in these situations.
Charlie had a very similar answer.
Yeah.
Of his experiences of traveling the world.
Yes.
Yeah.
As for you, it's similar because she, you could tell her opinion.
Yeah.
And then not wanting to be there.
And it's a, it's a natural thing to do too.
I think all three of them are very protective of this community. This atmosphere that we have and the struggle we're going to have of maintaining that. Going into the future. I think all three of them, that was fundamentals of all three. So.
Yes.
Yeah, for me, I Susan definitely has got an edge because she's been here before. I mean, she's, she's been in, in her position and um. So, but yeah, I don't know how we're going to do this. I know last time we didn't want to do a ranking, but I almost think we should, be in my opinion. I don't know if we're going to sit here and critique each person. It's going to really change a whole lot of minds.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw something out at the council. Because I, I, I thought about it um a couple of months ago. Well, maybe not that, quite that long ago, but it's been almost a couple of months ago after Grant's passed. And I was sitting here at the last interview process. Grant was sitting where J R is at right now. We, we were in this Donnie was back in Indiana on the phone. Uh, Dale was sitting there where you're sitting now. And I, I look at the seat we're replacing was Grant's due to his passing. And I remember his choice on the first interview process was Charlie given. And I look at that and I look at that in a way that we're replacing, we're, we're filling Grant's seat on the council for the next three years. And he wanted, he chose Charlie to fill um the seat that Donnie took. So I, I just, I'm just throwing that out there for thought, food for thought. Um.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, you're can.
Um, I think he voted for Donnie though, didn't he? Was it the first round that we went around that his first initial thought was Charles? Is that what you're, what you're saying? Because we've all been around.
He picked Charlie first.
Okay.
Pretty sure it's on record, right?
And then he did vote for Donnie, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, that he didn't vote against Donald. It's just
No, no.
When we first started going around the table, his first impression was, I really like Charles.
Yeah.
And I think.
And that's who he selected to be considered for a motion.
Okay. It didn't work out. The, the motion came up for Charles, but his first initial thought was that Charles would be really good. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
And um thank you for the, uh, bringing that back to our attention.
So I to be really honest with you, I, the first interview, I really liked Charisse too. And I like the youth. I, I like the diversity and the youth, uh, what she could bring. I liked her accomplishments as far as the mineral, uh, club and the, and the photography and I, you know, she and her willingness to attend all the council meetings and her willingness to be on the planning commission. I like that. I really like that too.
So the position we filled with Donnie was for women. So I mean, to, to the same vein, demographically in this town, we replaced the full woman on our council with a man. So I, I, I think that diversity on the council uh, is something we need to be aware of. I mean, I, I think Cherie made a pretty good argument of, you know, fifty percent or better of this town is made up of women. We need, we I mean, it's almost sexist to say that they bring a different perspective, but I think we all realize it's probably based in somewhat, some facts. So um so I'm going to make that argument that I, I understand your argument with Grant, but we didn't hold that argument true when we selected Donnie. So and you know, we're going to select somebody here. The trouble I see when somebody throws a motion out there to do it, then you're stuck with
A yes or no.
Yeah, yeah. Instead of everybody doing a ranking and you kind of really get everybody's Ross where they're placing and, and taking the top off.
I don't like the rankings because it tells somebody you were first, second, or third. When I still really believe any of these people here could do the job. I think we can talk about this till we come to consensus that we know who was going to get the votes without doing a paper thing and ranking them like Scott Laird did.
Um, we asked them to.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna throw out a, a motion um, before we've, I'm not even going to do it. I'm gonna let somebody else do it this time. Um, but I want to talk about it in depth, a little bit about each one. It does turn me off a little bit. And I've said it before, I don't like to pick someone to check a box. And it did turn me off a little bit at the end when she pushed that agenda of checking a box. Pick me because I'm a woman. We're not concerned about city hall staff here being all women except for one. Um, that doesn't seem to bother anybody. Um, doesn't bother me. Um. Um, I thought they were all strong interviews. I think Charlie improved some from last time. Uh, maybe he wasn't as nervous or something. I think Charisse was pretty much the same, maybe a little bit better even. Um, and, and Susan, she's so polished at it through her experience that nothing really changed on that one. So, um, the youth and the, and the different perspective, like you said, would, would, was probably Charisse's strong points. Uh, some of her answers are generalized. You know, how can you give a specific answer if you haven't really been doing this job? So that's, you know. Um, same with Charlie, he's, you know, but I feel like I felt like he's got the time, the devotion, the skill set to learn. Um, I thought that he's a business owner. That was a plus for me because in the past, we've always had business owners represent council, even the majority of them. If you go back and look, now we don't have any uh, particularly. Okay, Donnie, sorry. I'm, I'm thinking downtown portal. Excuse me. But I think that's a good person and a, and a veteran, a military guy. I think that's a positive plus for him also. Um, so I think it's a hard decision. We have three good candidates that are all qualified to do it. Obviously, they wouldn't be able to put the application in. Um, some are probably more technically qualified. Um, but it comes down to who you think you can work as a team with and get along with and not have tensions. That's a big part of this is, is we're a team here. And we can't have it, it's just hard to, to do something if you can't trust, you know, a motive or, or are you going to get a letter? Are you going to get in trouble for saying something that maybe didn't come out quite right? Can you handle it? Can you handle it one-on-one with somebody or go to the mayor and say, hey, can you handle this? I was kind of offended by this or whatever. So I, I don't think we could go wrong with any of the candidates, obviously. Um, but uh the check the box thing rubbed me a little bit the wrong way. I understand it though. Um. After Council Williams passed away in the first meeting, two of these three were right on the meeting and I felt like it was kind of altruistic, to be honest with you. That they were like waiting to get on council or something before we even said goodbye to Council Williams. And that personally, that rubbed me a little bit the wrong way.
So just as a reminder, that first meeting was the meeting where Charisse's planning commission application was on the agenda. That is why she was attending the meeting.
I understand that.
But just to clarify, it wasn't because he died. It was because she was a topic on the agenda.
Right, I understand that. But we didn't move forward with obviously placing her on the, uh, planning commission, but so, you know, I don't have a problem with really any candidates here. I like Grant, Grant was a strong supporter of Charlie. Um, I think you've even voiced support for Charlie. Um, I got a pretty good feeling for Charlie. Um. Is he going to be popular in some circles because of his business? Like you said, maybe not. Um. But it is Veronia probably less than it is not Veronia. So. Um. He's definitely educated. He's ran big, small, so he's got a lot of, uh, a lot of stuff he brings. Uh, he seems to really want the job. Uh, of course, all three candidates want the job or they wouldn't be here. But anyway, I've had my stay, so.
Thanks, JR. Donnie?
Well. All three did pretty good. Um. I am I guess a little sometimes when I hear diversified, that with what I've seen in the past kind of heads me in the wrong direction. Uh. They're being like the people wanting to change Columbus Day. I could be wrong with that opinion, but a lot of times when I get people say they're diversified, that they're heading in a direction that I think we do pretty good here in Veronia. And then have people pull stuff in and say you're not diversified enough. Kind of gets me. Um. But I think, yeah, they all three did pretty good. Um. Charlie just seemed more from the reading I got would be easier to work with than the other two. Dale?
So when we're talking about you know, we're, we're going to appoint somebody that's a representative of the people. And that's their diversity. Uh, like I said, probably over fifty percent of the population is female in this town. In the last election, they elected a female to the council. There again, I mean.
I think they elected Laura.
Well, and you can make that argument, but
I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
You know, and, and she objected by, to my term of optics, but I think there is an optics to it's going to be all older.
Is they all accountable?
Um, I, I would think women in this town would have a little sense of, you know, where, you know, am I really being represented here? Is my if there's a question before council, is there, other than probably staff would present an argument that, you know, we need to be more conscious of the whole, that it's just an older male perspective in this community. And now I agree Charlie's presentation today was better than the first go around. All three of these people are very qualified. Susan's probably the most qualified. Um. As far as having the background and stuff, but I agree with JR, we have to get to, hey, we have to work as a team and I he presents some issues that way for us. We've been there, so. Um. My only fear with Charlie is he's been in charge. And this is not a position of being in charge. This is a team that's gonna, you know, we have to work together and I know if I was somebody that ran a big organization all the time and then if I came into this situation and then if I'm seeing things that I don't like over on the people that are in charge, I'd say, I would, I would worry that you gotta separate that, stay in your lane. That we, you know, we don't have an issue that way. I, I, I don't know Charlie, so I don't know if this is going to bug him or not. I know the other two candidates that, well, I know the one candidate, it's probably an on an issue for, for, she knows her lane, so. Uh, I would suspect that the other one hasn't been in that position. So she probably would be easier to, you know, stay in her, in her lane. So that's why, my one concern. Um. Anyway, that's where I'm at.
When you mentioned that, I think that's what I picked up on just a little bit when I asked him the question about or let him know that you're not going to be in charge.
Yeah.
And he seemed to generally be, know that. And I think he's been retired long enough to where he's not like, I'm in charge, I'm used to that. And even if you're in the military, I'm pretty sure you have a boss above you.
Yeah, yeah.
He might be responsible and that might have been a better word for him to use, is responsible for this or that. Because nobody's really in charge. He must have worked king or something. Um. But I do see your concern with that. Um, I think Rick has had a, the opportunity to see him in action in other settings that I haven't seen. Um, I think I've had maybe two conversations with uh, with him in my life and both of them did feel genuine. I think he I think he's, he's honest to a honest to a fault or he's afraid of it being recorded, which is a good thing, which you'll get used to, I think. But uh that's another thing I said, well, if you're afraid to say it because it's being recorded, you better get used to that. Because if you're not saying what's on your mind, then what good are you? So, but uh but yeah. I mean, if we're, if we come to the conclusion we have to have a woman, then it's not fair to a candidate I thought did pretty well. Because then you're automatically saying you're out because you're male or you're out because you're female. I just don't like that.
Yeah.
You have to have this many or that many. I think the next election cycle is coming up pretty soon and
Another year.
The town could run if they want to and it could be all females um, for, for two or three positions here.
Well, it's, it's very interesting.
These three.
Um. And I have seen Charlie run meetings and starts at ten o'clock, he's done at eleven and and he's very courteous and kind and, and he's, he's prepared. And he runs a good meeting. And then just last week, I was talking to somebody about just what we talked about, his ability to be on council on certain, as senior board president synonymously and I'm not going to mention who it was, but they, they made a comment, oh, I'd sure like to have not Charlie. But she made the comment, or gee, the comment was made, oh, there's going to be a whole bunch of white, old, white men on it, you know?
Hey, I'm not old.
Well.
Give you time.
That, that's what Dale just talked about, that, that perception.
Yes.
Is it, is out there. And but just asking some of the questions we did, how, you know what, we have to do what's best for the city. And my skin has thickened up a little bit in the last three years. Um, being mayor, um. So you, you got, you're juggling three people and you want to pick the best one for the next three years. This is a position for the next three years. Let me remind the council. In another year, there's going to be two positions open. Um. Think ahead, what's coming before us with the, and who can best serve on the council? And basically it comes down to that.
Yeah, I'm thinking this, this, this year and the next two years, you know, it, which could be three different people. You could go, I could go, you could go.
Yeah.
We choose not to run or lose, whatever. So really I'm thinking who can don't even along with it too.
Yeah, yeah. Something to think about. Um.
I'm the lone duck.
But not land.
Um. And, and I'm, I'm also thinking about the, the state of our nation right now with COVID. We don't know. I kind of have an idea it's going to get better now that eighty percent of the population is vaccinated. But it, you know, there could be some more shutdowns. Who knows with this new variant coming in and, and what's going to happen, but I mean. My question I brought today was more related to, you know, what's going on nationwide and it's, it's a mess. In my answer to it, I think we need more law enforcement. We need stricter prosecutors and we need to start quit releasing these people.
Yep.
Yes.
And I, I heard some good things. Susan had a good answer with increasing and, but, and money. Um. I like Charisse's answer about the, the growth of Veronia. She wants to keep it pretty much like it is, I think she said. They all did. Um. What JR said, they're all three of them.
Right.
Um, I like the fact that she was on every meeting interested. That's one of the reasons why I chose Donnie because he's always sitting in the back of the room. That's, that was my decision.
So to that point, I don't know if you've noticed, but when we're online, there's been two of these candidates have been on our meetings on a regular basis.
I know.
So. I mean, if that was important to you then, it should be important to you now.
Yeah.
The one candidate that I don't, I think I've seen no one there, so.
Oh, and that's, that's another point I just made, yeah.
Right.
I mean, and, and I can see that as somebody that's a potential candidate. You know, if you're really interested in a job, you're going to be listening and because you've got to keep yourself in tune as to what's going on within the council. So when you can step in, if you're appointed, you're, you're just not, you know, out of the dark or you're just thrown into it. So that's just a point.
Charisse's negative is she's new, fairly new to the community.
Yeah.
The reason I nominated Donnie was the things we've talked about here tonight about him. Plus he's lived here. He knows Veronia. He knows the flavor of Veronia. He knows the people of Veronia. He knows how Vernonians think. And I think, I thought that was important. Um, because we are different than metropolitan Denver, California, Portland. Um, we don't want to be Portland. Those ideals have not worked. That city is in ruins almost now. So I thought that was important. Um. I just thought Donnie would represent the people because he is Veronia. Um. If you get what I'm kind of feeling, what I'm saying. So you got a candidate here that, um, has a business downtown. He's invested his time and money. He's taken a chance on Veronia. He believes in Veronia. He's retired here, as I said thirteen years ago. He seems to have the time, that's for sure, and the willingness. So that's important. I work full-time. Dry cleaner PDX, it's not easy. Um. You have a full-time job and you're on boards or other committees. It's not, it's just, it starts to pile on a little bit, but um. But the main thing is having the willingness to do it, I think. Um. Not a lot of people in town obviously wanted to sign up for it. But I still come back to, I always come back to, do you think the group cohesiveness? Um. And if it's a white male, it's a white male. If it's a young female, it's a young female. I really don't care. It's the to me, if I have to point somebody, it's going to be can we get along on a Saturday and come together and solve a problem? Or is there going to be have to watch everything you say or something like that? But, so I think that's uh, Charisse is really a bright, uh, young lady, obviously. She would be fine. So I think those are my top two, Charisse and Charlie right now. Um, I think unless someone can talk me out of it, I think Charlie's edging her out by just a hair right now, in my mind. Probably for the cohesiveness the mostly.
So you're, you are doing a ranking there for us. So if everybody just does that, I think we can come up with a decision, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not giving a one, two, three.
Yeah, but you're still, you differentiated and that, that's what we're going to have to do to make a decision.
Well, you have to to make a decision finally, yeah.
You don't want to do three, that's fine, but they fall, that's fine, you know?
Well, same, you guys can, you can sway me one way or another. I think my top two are really, really close. Yeah.
It's hard to decide between those two.
But I don't want to pick somebody to say I'm checking a box one way or another.
But the people chose us to make that decision.
Yes.
And they trust in us. And they trust in us.
I just think the, the veteran and the business owner edges are out just a hair. So and, and the, and the, how long he's been in the community. He's downtown. It seems like he's on the pulse of the crime going on in this town. But that's just my opinion, so. He speaks loud. I can hear him.
Yeah, he does have that in his vanity.
I'm just having a share. That is a plus.
Yes.
I know we didn't have a citizens board this time, but we did have the results from the first one and where they were scored, so. That does come, you know, I, I value that to a degree. I mean, even though we all disregarded the number one choice.
I think they had him ranked last time.
Four.
Did you agree with that?
On that first go around, I, I would have agreed with that. Yes.
He had a stronger showing tonight, obviously. In your mind too?
Yeah, no, I agree he did. Oh, yeah. In fact, I opened this up with, with that comment.
I kind of felt like he really I guess he I felt like he wanted the job. First, I kind of felt that way with Cherie's too.
I think they all want the job.
But I thought Charlie wanted it more this time than last time. That's what I'd say. He seemed a little bit I don't know. I just got a good feeling about him. I think he would, would be an asset in ways for the next three years because that's what we're looking at, three years. But he could say the same thing about all three of them, so.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I mean, you can make the argument of Cherie that when she got nominated for the planning commission, that she, she really wasn't interested in the council position. She would have just said, oh, I'll go there and not, you know, run. Keep, keep my hat in for council. No, she kept her hat in for council. So I think the same applies if, you know, the
Right. The want to be. I think my comment earlier might have been misconstrued a little bit. When I said the vulturistic thing, it probably wasn't her fault or Susan's fault. It's that the timing of it, they're right there, two candidates that had wanted to be on council. And then we hadn't even discussed grants passing, like not even a mention of it. And then don't want to go on the planning commission, so to speak, because I want to be, I think that meeting could have been handled and that's probably not their fault. Probably my staff did that. It just, it kind of rubbed me weird.
She wasn't, she didn't ask to take her name out of the planning commission. You guys made that decision for her. And then you asked if she would be willing to do that and she said yes.
Right.
Just to clarify that one.
Yeah.
Trying to stay on this as much as I can. I'll just remind.
Well, and I think Josette made the suggestion, and I think the reason she made the suggestion is you didn't put somebody into planning commission, then they got chose for council and they had to pull them out, refill. Trying to make the steps be permanent steps, not temporary steps.
Right. And I wish the city had not even done that. I wish they'd just taken it off the agenda. Taken it off the agenda and period. And then let us say goodbye to Grant in our way before that whole issue was brought to us because it, it did, it, it bothered me, I guess, so.
Well, we got through it and
Yeah.
We're moving ahead.
So Dale seems to be leaning towards Cherie again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I changed my mind from the first process. So I mean, that's, and Charlie second for me. So there's my ranking and so guys, we got one that's the other way and we need to hear from the other two and we can make a decision.
Well. I understand getting a younger person in here would be helpful, but also we have a good experienced person that's older. There's good quality in both of them and it's hard to really you think about the community, sometimes it tells you, yes, that younger person coming in might be a benefit to us or keep an older person a benefit. It, it's, those two are a real fine line. But the, the only thing I can see is that sure, it surely looked like with Charlie's interview, he'd be easy to work with. Cherie's them, I think she'd be okay, but Charlie just made it feel good, warming. A good person to work with.
Well, I'm going to probably throw a little curve in this. I'm going to give you a little bit different perspective, Don and J R.
Well, that's need different angles to help us.
I I've been in this community almost 50 years now. Dale's been all his life. You've been all, you've been all your life. I'm almost a lifer.
I'm like 40 years.
There's an awful lot of new people coming into Vernonia. I mean, a lot. There's a lot of young people, a lot of millennials that have come out here and they, they're part of our community now. You look at some of the churches and their youth programs and it, there's a lot of youth in this town. Yeah, we're older. Charlie, I'm going between Charlie and Cherie's right now. And I'm looking at the future of Vernonia long-term. And I get it about the diversity and, and you're more qualified for who you are rather than I mean, what you've done rather than who you are. But I, I'm kind of leaning towards Cherie and I'll tell you why, because there's a voice there. She's only one voice, just like your voice and my voice. And she represents sounds like she wants to live here for a while. And she represents those young people that come here. Things change all the time. Things, Vernonia's changed quite a bit since I moved here. Charlie's always going to be here. If he's not on council, he'll still be the president of the senior board. He'll still have his gun shop if he wants. Now, here's what I'm just stuffing around through my head, you know, if he wants to run for those two positions next year and in August, he wants to, Clary wants to run for city council. He can. I told you before the first interview, I, I like Cherie. I, I like that youth. I like that desire to learn. I think she's, she's smart. I just, I would feel it would represent a more more of our community if we had, not to say that a woman, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But I think she'd be a, she, her willingness to serve on this committee and her experience with other I, I think she could be an asset. I, I like her.
You know, I know there's a fear of newcomers, you know, getting up here. She's probably the newest one to the community, I think of the three.
What's that Dale?
There's a fear, sometimes there's a fear of the newcomers getting up here on council and, and and she's probably the newest one. But in her first interview, I don't remember, we didn't probably get it as much today. But the first interview, she was very explicit about why she moved here. And she did not, she does not want Vernonia to become Portland.
Yeah.
She was very insistent upon that. And to your point, the, I wouldn't call her a youth because she isn't.
No.
She is compared to us old guys, but, uh, no, no. Yeah, you're not old.
You're right there.
She's probably closer to your age last minute.
All that perspective.
It is, but it's, it's your point on being able to relate with the newer people that are in town. She can remind them of why you're moving here and probably why you don't want to do some of these things. Uh, better than we, you know, we're just the old hardliners. It's like, ah, we don't want, we don't want to be like Portland. She, she could say, I've been there. I lived it. And this is why you don't want Vernonia to do that. So that has always been the back of my mind argument. That was what impressed me in the first interview with her. And it just, it took that fear totally away for me. Of why, because usually I would not be for somebody that's really new to the community. I heard what she had to say in that regard. I was like, wow, she's got to live with some of us old timers. Because she experienced it. We have, we live in the fear of that coming here. We haven't lived it. We see it on the TV. See, see, I'm moving out of there because I don't want any part of it. You heard her today. She says even to go take photos. She don't even like going in there to take photos, so. Anyhow, that's, that's a point. You were saying how smart she seemed. Charlie's got how many master degrees?
I know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I agree. Probably got the best education.
I guess. And I don't, I haven't talked to her much. It's all what I see and hear. But I've seen her at all the council meetings lately and her desire to, to be informed of what's going on. I did talk to Charlie once after the first interview and he said, I asked him, you know, if he'd be interested or whatever. He said, oh, his comment was, oh, if you need me, kind of. I'll do whatever you need me to do. But today was a little different. His interview was a little more more than that. So it's, it's not easy.
Would you take that conversation as take it or leave it? Or did you take it as I'm not going to be pushy or what, what was your feeling on that? Cause you mentioned it.
Yeah, um, I took it as well, it's okay. I didn't get picked, but you know, I'll, I'm still interested, but whatever, I'm willing to help out, whatever you need me to do and, and he's back here, you know, trying to help out.
So it could come across as eh, whatever, right?
Yeah.
But now he seemed like he's
A little different.
I thought so. I thought so too. And again, it could be they don't want a high pressure. And I thought Cherie's comment about, I'll just close with got to have a woman, basically, because a high pressure tactic that I just don't it turns me off a tad.
Yeah, and it does me too, but
Because if I pick her, if I pick her, then it's, is it going to come down to that statement?
Well.
I wish she had this.
I tried to offer a little different light and I'm, I'm sincere with what I just said about uh, the youth in our community and she'd be a good representative and, and I I guess I said she's smart because I think she's willing to to dig into it and be prepared and learn and, and do what's best for Vernonia, so.
Do you think she filed a run in eight months? If she wasn't selected and didn't see?
I don't know.
If the community.
I would probably say. Yeah, that would have been a good question.
Do you think Charlie would? Or is he just wanted to be appointed or nothing?
I think Charlie probably would. I think, I think all three of them will. Yeah, probably.
So if they're not selected tonight, they're going to have a chance in a year to be selected by the community, no matter what, because there's going to be three seats open.
Yes.
Two, three.
Well, three, yeah.
That's three councils, positions open for two people. So they can all get on council probably, unless we did all decide to run again and, and win.
Yes.
So it's kind of like no one's going to get left out for long.
Well, if it helps, I'm willing to take the gamble on the youth.
On the youth?
Because she kind of, with her experience, I think maybe this is kind of a a funny saying, but yet it's pretty true. People moving here need to change to us. We don't need to change where they just move from. She has seen the headaches where people have been. She sees what we do here and maybe she can help some of those people that are coming here and say, hey, you've moved from this atmosphere. This is this atmosphere. Maybe you need to join in on this atmosphere. Does that make sense?
I guess, just like Charlie said, been all over the world.
Yes.
There he is.
But I think with her maybe being involved in the school is going to catch some more, more of the younger ones that are moving here and maybe help some of the kids. Just shooting it out there. She might be able to say, hey, we don't have this crime here. You guys can help keep it from happening here with the kids or parents complaining about stuff and she can maybe say, hey, we don't live in Portland. This is how we deal with it here. People work together, not against each other. You know, just the ideas. As well as maybe getting somebody into here younger for a while to know ropes as time goes on, she'll know everything and maybe keep it going the way Vernonia's been growing or has been.
I do, yeah, in, in vacuum of mind, it's people that run for this position run for all kinds of different reasons. Some people access to grind and want to be here and do these different things. Some people think they have power, which we all know that's not the case. In a way I feel like you almost are grooming your future in a way by picking somebody that's potentially could want to stay in the position for a longer time if the citizens agree with how they're performing. Because, you know, eventually councils age out or, or just plain get replaced. We've seen that the last election cycle or two. Well, I don't want to get into age discrimination, so I don't vote by age. Yeah, I mean, and it's I'm just saying if somebody would have a longer term potentially, you know, would be in that position for a longer term. But in today's world, you've got to be very cognizant of lawsuits and litigation over age discrimination. When you say someone is better because they're younger or better because they're older or vice versa, age could really probably not factor into it as more, more than obviously. age could really probably not factor into it as more, more than obviously experience and, and get along with the group here. So I'd caution us to not base our vote just because someone's younger.
I would say.
You're talking about demographics, though, and you guys have touched on the sex thing also.
Yeah.
So when you're talking strictly about demographics, I mean, not only in this interview process, but the one before, you've definitely touched on some things that were not necessarily right. I think this time is going a lot better in walking that line of just talking about diversity and not talking about discriminating against someone because of their age or sex.
Right, I just making it clear for myself, it's not about how old somebody is or what gender they are.
Correct.
I've said that over and over, I want to pick the best person for the community and for the group to get along with, and I still think that's Charlie. I still think any of them are good candidates. I still think in August they can file, and the other two would probably be sitting on council shortly after. There's nothing seeming to be a huge clamoring to join council and do the work for free in this community right now. And I don't know why that is, I think it's part of the demographic of everybody's commuting and busy with life, we're not working in our neighborhood, staying in our neighborhood, volunteer fire department type days, so.
And I, I think when Donnie said youth, he, he meant Sharice.
Yes.
Did you?
Yes, yeah.
Right, I understand that.
But still, that's kind of putting an age
Yeah.
bond, so I, I'm willing to go with somebody that I think will be here a lot longer.
Oh, you know what, Dale?
Yeah, and you know mine. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll take a motion that we appoint Sharice Ash, who's our newest city council member.
Your second. Oh, second, seconded by Councilor Norman. Could you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hilbert?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's a done deal.
Good job, you guys. Good deliberation.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, it's not easy, is it? Now you know what we go through.
Yeah. Oh, we can close?
Yep.
Yes.
But Stephanie, get on for Dave.
We got you out here before noon. We'll close this session, interview session at 11:35.